To talk about the future of New York State and how we're going to move forward with the renewable energy goals, thank you to be here.
Hi, good afternoon, Robert Rodriguez, the Secretary of State, head of the Department of State.
Good afternoon, I'm Rick LaRue, and I'm the Commissioner of the New York State Department of Labor.
I'm Rick Danisowski, I'm the Commissioner of New York State Homes and Community Renewal, the state housing agency.
Hi, my name is Raya Salter, I'm the founder of the Energy Justice Law and Policy Center, I'm an appointee to this body, and I'm thrilled to see everyone here.
Good afternoon, everybody, Peter Iwanwitz, I am Executive Director of the Cardinal Advocates NY, and I'm also an appointee from Assembly Speaker Carlson.
So, thank you all for being here this evening. While we don't have all of our council members here in person today, I want to assure you that all members are involved closely and invested in this process. We would also like to thank Bronx Community College for supporting tonight's hearing, and I also asked the participants at today's hearing to maintain decorum and abide by the rules posted by the college. So we, as the Climate Action Council, thank you for your interest in the draft scoping plan and for your attendance at this evening's hearing. We are looking forward to hearing from the public on the work of the council over the past two years, which is reflected in the draft scoping plan. This hearing is one of eight in-person and two virtual hearings being conducted across New York State to ensure residents, businesses, and interested parties have an opportunity to share their input related to the draft scoping plan, which was released on December 30th, 2021. Tonight's meeting will be livestreamed on the Climate Act website. Additionally, a stenographer will take record of any verbal comments received tonight as well. All comments provided here today will be considered by the Climate Action Council as it finalizes the scoping plan by January 1st, 2023. Written comments are also being accepted through June 10th, 2022, and additional details can be found on the Climate Act website at climate.ny.gov. Written comments and oral comments are rated equally by the council. So with that, I will now hand it over to our hearing facilitators to run through the structure of tonight's hearing.
Excited to see everyone here tonight, happy to see this kind of turnout. I do want to say, I do see a couple of people with posters that need their way into the hearing room, please turn them over, they cannot be used in the hearing room, you can either turn them over or leave them on the table outside. Tonight's hearing will work in this way, we want to leave as much time as possible as many people as possible. And so, in the complete registration, anyone who's pre-registered will be seen first. The dinner room is moved on, people registered tonight. If you have not yet registered and you would like to speak, you will be able to enter your comments on the web site, there's a comment form for that. There are also seven more hearings in person, as well as this tomorrow, the next one. There are two virtual hearings, and those, tonight's hearings will be livestreamed. So for the, for the, for the rules of order, we want to hear from as many people as possible. You may agree with what people are saying, you may disagree with what people say, that doesn't change the importance of what they're saying. So please, no applause, no booms, no jumping up and down, let's hear as many people as possible to account. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak, you will have two lines, for people to speak. Facilitators will hold the mic, trying to deserve as much help as possible. We will warn you when you are about to express your comments, and then you can wrap up and move on to the next speaker. For conduct, just please be polite, be courteous, please be respectful, it's a big topic and a lot, a lot to say. So, we're back, we're going to start with a presentation on the Climate Act. And then I'll be back, moving on to your hearing.
Thank you. Thank you to all those in the audience and those viewing remotely for joining us here today. My name is Sarah Osgood, and I'm the Executive Director of the Climate Action Council. I have the brief slide deck to run through today that provides a bit of context on the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, which I'll also refer to as the Climate Act, as well as the process for developing the draft scoping plan. Move to the first slide. Could we please advance the slides? If we could move to the overview slide, please. The Climate Act established very ambitious and necessary nation-leading greenhouse gas reduction requirements and set them in statute for the first time in New York. Achieving these targets positions New York to meet internationally established goals called for by the scientific community and identified within the legislation. The Act empowers every New Yorker at light climate change while improving our daily lives through job opportunities, improved public health, and more resilient communities and infrastructure. In addition to climate leadership, the other central component of the law is requirements for our communities, most notably those that have been historically overburdened and could be in the future as our changing climate takes stronger hold, and to benefit from our activities and actions. So, what is the draft scoping plan? So in addition to setting the emissions reductions and technology targets, the Climate Act established a Climate Action Council that's tasked with developing a scoping plan identifying how a state can meet its greenhouse gas limits. It calls for the draft to be issued by the end of 2021, followed by a public comment period, referred to as the NAM, prior to issuance of the finalized scoping plan. The scoping plan takes a holistic economy-wide view of New York's greenhouse gas emissions, and the law outlined a process for this that included a number of advisory panels and working groups, and ultimately comprising well over 100 experts, providing sector-specific recommendations to the council. It also identified some key factors and impacts for the council to consider, including climate justice, job creation, health benefits, and a benefit cost analysis. The recommendations contained in the draft scoping plan also form the basis of scenario modeling that considers the interactions and impacts of strategies across sectors. Next slide. So I think it's a little helpful to see visually from what the Climate Act requires in terms of emission reductions over time. If we go back to that slide, please. Thank you. So here on the left, you see our current greenhouse gas emissions by sector, and where our overall emissions need to get to over time on the right. So you can see that it's quite a dramatic reduction for the next two decades. Using the current, for the current emissions, using the new emissions accounting established under the Climate Act, you can see that buildings in yellow and transportation in blue are now the greatest contributors, and amount to over 50% of the state's greenhouse gas emissions. Electricity generation, which is shown in green, is a smaller piece of the pie now, and the contribution from the waste sector, which is shown in orange, has increased. Next slide. So as was mentioned, the draft scoping plan was released on December 30th of last year and is available at the climate website, climate.ny.gov. It's the result of over 18 meetings of the council where they received information, recommendations, and feedback from a variety of experts, advisory panels, and working groups, as well as analytical modeling of the overall cost and benefit associated with the recommendations contained in the plan. The advisory panels and working groups also conducted inclusive processes for the development of recommendations that were ultimately advanced to the council. Collectively, over 90 public meetings where their work was presented and discussed were held, and they sought perspectives from other panels, experts, the Climate Justice Working Group, the public, and other stakeholders. The draft also includes the new emissions accounting dictated by the Climate Act, so upstream emissions associated with fossil fuels from out of state are included, and the benefit cost analysis includes the DEC value of carbon, which was also established pursuant to the Climate Act. Finally, as I mentioned a minute ago, the recommendations in the draft scoping plan also form the basis of scenario modeling, and this is to show the impact of the strategies as they work across sectors. And we've got three mitigation scenarios that I'll get into in just a minute, but first I'd like to go to the next slide on the summary of strategies in the draft plan. So, there were key, a few key strategies that emerged as fundamentals to achieving the greenhouse gas emissions limits and net zero greenhouse gas emissions requirements of the Climate Act. Those include energy efficiency measures, transition from fossil fuels to electrification in buildings, zero emissions electricity, transportation electrification, enhancement of transit, smart growth, and reduced vehicle miles traveled, a transition to low global warming potential refrigerants, and enhanced refrigeration management, maximizing carbon sequestration in New York's forest and lands, eliminating fugitive methane emissions across the waste, agriculture, and energy sectors, and a diverse portfolio of solutions in the industry sector, including efficiency, electrification, and limited and strategic use of oil-fired fuels, and carbon capture technologies for certain industrial applications. Next slide, please. The scenarios that were modeled on me exceed the greenhouse gas limits and carbon neutrality, and each require transformative levels of effort in all areas, and also represent high electrification in all of the scenarios. But they do represent distinct worldwide views that were based on feedback from both the Climate Action Council and the Climate Justice Working Group. So first I'll call out what's common to all of them: all reach zero emissions power sector by 2040, all require enhancement and expansion of transit options and reduce the production of vehicle miles traveled, significant levels of electrification and energy efficiency, increased methane mitigation in agriculture and waste sectors, and end-use load flexibility to help manage the electric grid reliably. So, now just to highlight where they differ. Scenario two is the strategic use of low-carbon fuels, and so this uses, includes the use of bioenergy derived from biogenic waste, agriculture, and forest residues, and limited purpose-grown biomass. Scenario three is an accelerated transition from combustion, and here we see less of a role for bioenergy and hydrogen combustion, but with accelerated electrification of the buildings and transportation sectors. And then finally, scenario four is our beyond 85% reduction scenario, and this includes both an accelerated electrification and a very targeted use of low-carbon fuels. Next slide, please. We completed a comprehensive cost-benefit analysis, as required by the law, for the scenarios that I just described. Apologies for not having the graphic up here, just a quick second. Alright, so I'm just going to keep moving forward regardless here. So, the main gist of the slide that you can't see, but you can see on our Climate Act website, is that the cost of inaction exceeds the cost of action by more than $90 billion. So in other words, the actions that are described in the draft scoping plan offer significant benefit to New York when accounting for the avoided greenhouse gas emissions and the improvements to public health that's called for in the Climate Act. In addition to this, it's also important to note that there's additional significant benefits and opportunities to create hundreds of thousands of jobs associated with the activities that are outlined in the scoping plan. Next slide, please. So this concludes what I was wanting to provide as an overview for the, on the scoping plan, but I do just want to make, draw your attention to two different comment periods. Of course, we have the one we're currently here for, but we also have a draft criteria that was developed by the Climate Justice Working Group for identifying disadvantaged communities. That criteria was released last month, and the draft criteria is currently out for public comment. It will guide the equitable implementation of the Climate Act, and it requires the state direct resources to ensure that disadvantaged communities receive at least 35% of the goal of 40% overall benefits of spending on clean energy and energy efficiency programs. Comments on the disadvantaged communities criteria will be accepted through July 7, and there are several ways in which to provide comments. Hearings are also being planned and will be posted on the Climate Act website. And then finally, just a reminder of the public comment periods for this draft scoping plan. This afternoon is the first of 10 hearings, the council is holding across the state virtually. You can see the dates and times of the other hearing locations on your screen. You also can provide written comments via a form on the Climate Act website, by email to scopingplan@nicerta.ny.gov, or by mailing to the NICERTA offices with attention to the draft scoping, the address is here. The comment period is open through June 10, and as I've mentioned, for more information please visit, I mean, the website, climate.ny.
This is hard to get hearing portion, if I could have my facilitators. So just to go over the rules of order quickly, tonight is the night to hear the public, tonight is the night to hear your comments and your questions and your ideas. It's not a forum, it's not a discussion evening, and so the council members who are here tonight are here to hear you and are here to report them. They may ask a clarifying question, if there's something that you say that they don't understand, that they'd like to have pre- phrased perhaps, but they will not be engaging in discussion and want to make sure that we have lots of them to hear from you. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to call the speakers, the pre-registered speakers up in groups. If you pre-registered, you received a registration card that has a group number on it, and I'm going to call the group numbers, the groups up one at a time. Facilitators will hold cards for you, you'll have two minutes, there'll be a timer that'll show up on the screen. Facilitators will let you know within about 30 minutes or 30 seconds, so that you can wrap things up, and then move on to the next. If you don't have a chance to finish everything that Martha said, and if Sarah Osgood explained that there are other ways for groups to sit, and if you go to the west side, you'll find a clarifying board. So, we have a different review. Is it one? So can group one, please line up and play Corina, Benoit, and Martha, and should please line up, mind your own business, the roles are first and last. Can you hear me? Yeah, okay. Corina is going to read the class. Corina will read the name, and the title, and affiliation if there is one, for the speaker. They will have two minutes. Corina, could we hear from the first speaker, please?
Yes, Christopher Joe, Vice President, Gona, New York.
Good afternoon, my name is Christopher Joe, I'm speaking on behalf of the Council on Environmental Utilities. We've served the New York region for almost 200 years, providing electricity, gas, and steam to fiber mill customers. Our core focus is on reliability and safety. Our electric system provides world-class reliability, even times more reliable than New York State and national average, and we've installed thousands of remotely monitored methane detectors to alert our gas control center leaks outside homes or businesses. We offer bill discounts to our most vulnerable customers, as well as targeted energy efficiency programs in disadvantaged communities. We will continue to develop these programs in alignment with CLCPA recommendations. We support achievement of the goals of the CLCPA, and our clean energy commitment is our pledge to transform our business and meet those goals. Our commitment has five pillars: building an electric grid to meet the growing demand for clean energy, empowering customers to adopt energy efficiency, electric vehicles and heat pumps, substantially lowering the gas system's greenhouse gas impact, reaching that zero GHG a month facilities by 2040, and partnering with stakeholders to achieve this transformation. We agree with many of the recommendations in the scoping plan. I'll address four specific aspects: reliability, gas transition, the customer's role, and the role of utilities. The scoping plan's focus on reliability is essential. We need to sequence actions so clean resources are integrated with existing supply resources in a way that does not negatively affect reliability. We see four key actions to achieve the gas transition: reducing fossil gas consumption, slowing and then reversing growth of the gas system, decarbonizing the gas we deliver, and addressing cost impacts of a smaller gas system while sustaining safety and reliability. Customer adoption of clean energy is fundamental to achieving CLCPA goals. Electric vehicles are an example. We need to solve customer regimens and have to eliminate customers by hand for EVs. We're building a utility infrastructure today to achieve CLCPA goals, for example, advancing transmission projects to facilitate reduction in emissions in disadvantaged communities. And we do do more. We run the numbers and we think utility provider renewables is the least cost for our customers, and our utility is the second largest provider of solar generation in America, and we aren't allowed to bring that expertise to New York. The state should authorize us to build renewables. Thank you.
Let's hopefully applause, we can have beautiful, joyful, beautiful.
This is James Levin, President of the Utility Workers Union of America.
So, good evening, and thank you, council, for having us for open comment period. It's great to be here in Bronx, as a young boy from the Bronx who's grown up and watched utilities, how they've grown. As utility workers, we're not against the issues that need to be addressed around climate. We know that these issues are vital and important, but the truth be told, we need to definitely make sure that when we talk about transition, it's a true transition. Too many times, we've heard just transition, but things are forgotten in it, and those are workers and communities. We know that in order to achieve a climate change, we need to make sure that these are included in it. I represent 50,000 utility workers across the country, and we're watching developing in communities going through these changes, but too many times, we've seen from the past, communities left behind, like coal miners in Kentucky, to even the Kodak's upstate New York, and we need to make sure that they're in this equation. See, the members I represent, I've always looked at them as veterans of energy, and while they're veterans of energy, they serve the community, they make sure that there's economic growth and growth in those communities. Too many times, we've seen that they're left behind, and the communities left behind in these, in these developing changes. As we look in changing our fossil fuels into cleaner renewable energy, we've got to make sure that we do it in a smart and wise choice, not to say that we shut down power plants and put Canadian power lines in to provide jobs to Canadians. I have no problem with Canadians, but we've got to take care of the people in New York. We need to make sure that we're developing, and we need to take care of the citizens. Thank you, council.
If Victor Dena, tell me, he issued from Bronx, New York.
This city has been poisoning the children of the South Bronx, the Brooklyn. Climate change, pollution, the issues come about, they are not distant threats, they affect us here and now. One of three kids in the Bronx have asthma. How many kids have laid out on the ground gasping for breath because they were not, they were not sure if they were going to die that day? How many of my kids in this borough have died? We need a just transition to renewable energy. The amount of lives that pollution has taken in this city is a stain on the soul of the state. The amount of lives that pollution has taken in this city is a stain on the soul of the state. We need Scenario Three. And I would even say that Scenario Three is the bare minimum we need for this city. We need a dedicated funding source for the CLCPA. The Bronx has been handed enough solutions. We need Scenario Three. We are not just talking about a jumpstart in the economy, we are talking about our supply. We know that fossil fuel industries spend a lot of money lobbying against a renewable future. They have tried to drown out the voice of the community, but we know that you can hear us right now. We know the causes, we know the issues, and we know you know because we've been telling you about it for years. There are challenges that need to be carried out. Challenges that need to be carried by good people, people doing good work. And if we have people in any part of this industry not capable of doing that, then we need to find them. And I'm not talking about our workers who are laborers, I'm talking about electric issues that continue to let us down. Because a just transition means no one gets left behind. Because if no workers got left behind, they were left behind by industry, not legislation. When those jobs got lost, it's because the industry decided they weren't worth the transition. They were worth good jobs, they were worth good hours, and they were worth good medicines to prevent black lung. There will always be space for laborers in a new transition. There will always be space for new places. We need to retrofit our sewer systems, we need to integrate better electricity facilities. Every single laborer in this group has the capacity to do that because they are brilliant. What not the industries that hold them are capable of doing that is the issue. I blame CEOs, not workers.
Terrence Pre, Plumbers Local One.
I'd like to start off by saying good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, especially my brothers and sisters from Local One, also the members of the Climate Action Council, for taking their time.
I'd like to.
Right. So I appreciate all for coming out to support our cause. I myself am a proud Bronx native, born and raised. From my neighborhood of Pelham Bay to Auto Avenue to Ford Road to Pelham Parkway, right here to Grand Concourse where our beloved Yankees play, to the Hall of Fame terrace where we are right now. I am blessed to call myself Attorney General Plummer of Local One. I've lived and grown up in this beloved borough all my life. At this moment, we are facing a tribulation to not only the livelihood of my fellow union brothers and sisters, but to all Bronxites. This legislation would require a massive infrastructure modification from family residences to businesses such as restaurants that we all love to own. Small business owners will be subject to an uncertainty of unreliable power grid. I'm sure everyone here, as well as me, myself included, especially inner-city residents, are the backbone of our star car and for New York City as that. For that matter, I've crunched the numbers myself. And roughly, it would cost an average homeowner close to $40,000 to convert an electric water heater to gas appliances. I don't know about everyone here, but I don't have $50,000 laying around. The extra, you know, wind, water turbines on the future, it has to be lucrative and we have to come to it together. I'm all about, you know, preserving the planet's ecosystem, making sure that we preserve Mother Earth. But we are decades away. And we will have college. My kids will graduate to college by the time I'm done.
Keryani, co-founder of Jewish Climate Action Network.
Hi, I'm Rabbi Huwimimis. As mentioned, a co-founder of the Jewish Climate Action Network of New York City. We're a group of New York Jews of many opinions who agree on one thing, that we must act on climate change. We stand upon the laws and prophetic voices of our tradition. And I'm actually here today because of my wife. On the night of September 1st, I thought that she was going to die. Hurricane Ida was raging that night. But my wife is a pediatric ER doctor, and kids at the hospital needed her. So she left our house and rode off into the storm. She called me later from the Major Deacon just a couple miles from here. She was terrified. Floodwaters were rising around her, her car had stalled twice. She called 911 and 311, but nobody answered. For two hours, we wondered if she would survive. At home with our young children, I prayed to God. And when EMTs finally rescued her, I saw. The car was lost, but my wife was saved. But she was lucky. Tragically, over 50 people, painted in the image of God, died that night in a storm that was turbocharged by climate change. This was the first time that I felt fossil fuels threatened my family directly. The first time I understood that climate change is here in the Bronx. And so as a Bronx resident, I want to support three changes to strengthen the Scoping Plan for our community. Number one, the plan needs to clarify how to expand public transportation. Our roads are too crowded and too dangerous. How to storm harden our transportation, electrify it, and build more inner-city rail. Two, the plan needs T, including a dedicated funding mechanism and legally enforceable mandates. And three, too many underserved Bronx children suffer from asthma. My wife sees many of them in her ER. So I ask you to prioritize environmental justice in this plan, to adopt Scenario Three. And particularly, to ensure strong limits on false solutions like biofuel, biomass, and waste incineration, which will damage our air quality. I ask you, remember the people who died in Ida. Remember the people dying from air pollution in our city. And remember my wife. Thank you.
Line up behind Joseph, please.
Wendy Seligson, the Jewish Climate Action Network.
So as a great coincidence, I follow my colleague from the Jewish Climate Action Network. I'm a resident of Riverdale, New Bronx, and a member of the Jewish Climate Action Network. In 2017, 2018, and 2019, as a J.CAN member, I met with Bronx and Manhattan legislators, rallied in Albany and New York City, and educated my community to obtain passage of the CLCPA. In the last few years, I worked with J.CAN, the Point CDC, and other Bronx organizations to advocate for billions of dollars per year to fully implement the CLCPA and achieve the environmental justice mandates that center the health of South Bronx residents. In March 2022, 13 of the 15 members of the Bronx delegation, Assembly and Senators, recognized this, the need to fund the CLCPA, and signed a letter of support conclusion of $15 billion in the New York State budget. Climate devastation is personal in the Bronx. Over the past 10 years, I have increasingly felt the impact of climate change around me in many ways. In 2022, I was managing a community center on the Lower Side in Superstore Standing Place. My center closed for over a week. And even when it reopened, for months, provided showers and support for those who continue to be displaced. I think of displaced displacement as I watch in Florida when climate is ravishing, fleeing the US, Mexico, and Central America, through the destruction of their life. I'm here to fight for five things. To make environmental justice, public health, and a just transition. Home first, the Bronx children, all children, children of, the workers who carry the day, the children that are throughout our state. No false solutions, fund the CLCPA, adopt Scenario Three, and please make the CLCPA, CAC, Scoping Plan enforceable. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Huwimis, Kerynis, Kerymas Sanchez. And I'm the New York City Councilmember for District 14, where we are meeting today. And I'm also the chair of the New York City Council, how they are held in Nova. I want to thank the members of the Climate Action Council for holding this important hearing today. Sorry, I ran here. I want to thank the members of the Climate Action Council for holding this one. On the Dr. Scoping Plan, to guide the implementation of each nation relating climate goals, under the climate leadership of the Community Action Act. The Bronx has a long history of environmental disadvantages, of generations of environmental racism and disinvestment in our communities. Even now, local communities and communities of color, of mind, of voice, of race, and identity, are on the frontline of climate crisis. Both in terms of exposure to climate risk and access to resources to recover from climate disaster. Any efforts for the ambitious undertaking, for this ambitious undertaking, addressing a zero-emissions state, requires us to contest with how our communities came to this reality. Second, we must ensure that these communities receive unprecedented funding and support to combat the ways in which climate change has impacted us. Here in District 14, nearly 20% of homes are without cooling this summer. Exposing residents to increased risk for heat-related illness and death. Same is true for our schools. We know that most heat stroke deaths occur in homes where there is no air conditioning. The finalized closing plan includes increased funding to provide and install heat pumps, which offer an energy-efficient alternative, the furnaces and air conditioners for all kinds. A lot more in your testimony. I just want to thank you for coming out to the day today. And if I could just give one last point to emphasize that with this transition, very meaningful to me and to many of the members of the council and leadership in New York City, that we're transitioning with the jobs, that labor is a crucial conversation, and we do everything that we can to lift up our communities.
Michael Ferrell, Director of Development at EES.
My name is Michael Ferrell. I'm a New York City resident and an AS supporter. AS supports the Green Future, some of the accelerated energy matters. AS is a leading way to use in New York, creating energy, electricity, and gas. They could all take 2 gigawatts, and the side will save on energy, solar, and storage. Including the redevelopment of the last apartment in New York, that's a plan. The repowering of the largest real estate in New York. Additionally, we prioritize bringing benefits to communities while we're developing. AS is also a member of the Alliance for Clean Energy and More. I serve on our board of directors. AS New York supports the entirety of the draft Climate Action Plan. Our marks today will focus on geo- and geohiding development in New York. AS supports the visions in the draft Climate Action Plan. We're supporting the development of renewable electricity technologies, like wind and solar. Simply by building and enabling wind and solar to our foundation of this plan. This is how we green the grid and ensure the grid is ready for transportation, recently increasing the electric bill. We build renewables, new projects, replace traditional power. Just like we're doing at Somerset. Reducing air pollution and climate creation, creating hundreds of construction jobs. My message is that so chief 70% 30% of New York's significant wind solar values into indoor construction. New York's continuing procurement and aggressive schedules, supporting at least 4,500 gigawatt per year. ORES is continuing to improve the stream process, the cost of the entire environment is deciding the projects. Developers do the street line interaction process in New York. And fourth, investments in transmission distribution systems to allow for the use of new resources. Achieving the state's renewable energy goals for also robust and permanent programs to restore energy to our development in New York City. In conclusion, I see the New York Climate Action Council, their draft plan, and the support they receive. We know that will require a lot of work, and here we're certainly here to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Miguel, for testifying in the draft hearing. I am here to say that all the specific recommendations on the Climate Action Plan and others in the final plans to be in my group.
My name is Kanyi Soki, and I recorded and raised in the Bronx and learned an environmental nonprofit called Environmental Lab. I was too little when I was diagnosed with asthma. Most of my childhood spent swimming, child, and activities. I'm able to remember why I was listening to different children. Today, I use these tools to create problems. While I know my mother's view of this, my mother's view of this, we're sure that we're entering into the children's and developing and running for the party, and that's the ones who are stemming from poor air quality. Without a doubt, the outgoing climate crisis is one of the biggest, social, and economic threats to this country. Transitioning renewable energy, electrifying our economy under the draft Climate Act is a good first step. But there are other factors that can generate radiation. One, by 2024, New York State is required to reach zero emission electric grid. The final plan is a recommendation that will perpetuate pollution and generate electricity. The plan was also avoid all solutions when used with gas and waste energy that are natural. Especially in coal. The draft plan explores technology section, largely problematic in innovation of expanding renewable natural gas, green hydrogen, and answers to long-duration storage. I joined the climate justice working group expressing strong concern about the emerging technologies mentioned, plus waste energy and climate. As they can lead in production of gas, and coal, and are inherently inefficient. As my mother always says, invention is never included. We must prevent future climate damage by utilizing renewable energy. And not trying to solve this problem with full solution. I urge you to implement and finalize plans set around two generations, community investment, and natural solutions. Thank you for your time.
Leah McGowan, representing the Sierra Club.
Hi, my name is Lee, as in leadership. My mother always told me to say that if people mispronounce my name. Can I take this out? Is that all right? Okay, I want to start by saying thank you all for being here. It's nice to be together in person and see smiles. And I want to say thank you to a lot of plumbers here. And I live in the Bronx. We had a scary gas outage in my building with multiple leaks. Last winter, in the midst of a huge winter blizzard, and we were given other electric heaters that had a risk of starting fires. And I remember being afraid to sleep at night. And I've also had nightmares of massive storms blowing my community away in the South Bronx, where we're built on the water. I am a chosen New Yorker here for 15 years. And I love this city because we're moving forward and evolving in all the areas. The world continues to evolve. We can see this with climate change. Will we evolve? We can see the effects now with wars abroad over gasoline. I'm wearing green today because I want to encourage us going green. My Irish descent and for the $90 billion that we could lose potentially by not changing. It's difficult to change. I serve as a lifeguard for the city. I know that we need laws to help encourage change and rules. New York has been the leader in the world. We started hot dogs, General Tso's Chicken, toilet paper, and hip hop. We can lead the world in evolving humanity, to be here as human-timed on Planet Earth, going through major crises, climate change. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm honored to retire, and I work for international aid. I am sorely disappointed in the Ag and Forests Section of the Dr. Scoping Plan. Against the recommendation of the Climate Justice Working Group, Chapter 15 wishes for offsetting carbon trading programs that are contrary to the mandates of the CLCPA and push false solutions like biomass and biogas. During my career, I witnessed too many aerospace-carbon offset markets that were frankly nothing but brainwashes. Switching gears, I want to address the issues that are put in center in my community and her own. I barely need to repeat how devastating COVID pandemic has been for Harlem and other communities of color. Harlem also has astronomically high rates of asthma. We know that asthma is a homarythidity that accelerates harm when sickened by COVID. The largest contributor of the New York State's greenhouse gas emissions is from buildings. The faster we can remove fossil fuels, the better the health outcomes for people in my community and me too. It is the burning of fossil fuels that increases asthma and air It is the burning of fossil fuels that increases asthma and air conditioning vascular risk because boilers and stoves leak nitrogen, carbon monoxide, and in a fine particulate matter into our kitchens and homes. Children living in homes with gas stoves are up to 42% more likely to develop asthma. So I implore the CAC not to succumb to the API's astrotory front theory that say they have the vascular infection. The legacy of historically red light immune still resonates today in the air we breathe and the lack of green space, which contributes to the urban heat island effect. It is 15 degrees hotter in Harlem in the upper side of heat hills. In 2050, I will be 103 years old. I want to be able to look back to 2020 and say I was there when the members of the CHP chose to move forward with the implementation of the CLCPA with no cost solutions in support of climate justice. I will be here in 103 years or more.
James Chavito, the Utility Association Editor.
Good afternoon. I'm James Chavito, President of Wolfwood, New York Utility Market Union of America. I represent 8,000 technical women who work across 12 different companies in the utility industry, including Con Edison and those that worked at Indian Point, who my members are now working on its decommission. As a member of this Climate Action Council's advisory panel on the just transition to our clean energy future, I would like to make public the items addressed by Doc, the subject matter expert on the panel. Our mission calls for energy transition that values jobs as well as the environment. The reality is that New York State, let alone our nation, is not anywhere near preparing to jump off the current grid of gas, electric, and nuclear generation straight to grid solar thermite or any other where they can energies that will be needed in the coming decades. I acknowledge we are in a climate crisis, and if our societies can continue to thrive, we have to move to our energy generation to clean renewable efficient resources. In the interim, we have to use what we have right now to do more efficient and cleaner capacities. One of those cleaning capacities is to use our existing gas infrastructure to deliver natural gas and green hydrogen, which could go a long way to address astronomical costs that will hit consumers. We need to allow technology to develop including technology until the time that renewables are readily available. Roundouts and blackouts, which will unquestionably result from shutting down the current plants or any substitute systems at the ready. Yes, we need immediate change. We have grappling with these realities, but we cannot just turn off what we have now and hope for magical solutions. We've already seen the strain from the abrupt closing of Indian Point, and we refuse to allow the retrofit, clean and operating plants to generate. All right, just a moment. If we're wise, we can get this done, and we must not forget to transition the workers as well as the system. Thank you.
Let's move over to Maria. Silas Devede, New York City Environmental Justice Line.
Good afternoon, members of the Climate Action Council. My name is Silas Devede, and I am the policy organizer of the New York City Environmental Justice Line, SNEJA. While I am here to summarize my testimony on behalf of the organization, I also represent the perspective of many who come to the environmental racism having grown up with asthma in the Bronx. 1991, SNEJA's nonprofit Citywide Membership Network and grassroots organizations promoted income neighborhoods and communities of color in their struggle for environmental justice. Our members work around issues that prohibit communities to thrive and coordinate campaigns designed to restructure city and state policies toward a just future. Many of the communities we represent are overgirded by the clustering of power plants and other polluting infrastructure in their neighborhoods. In February, the IPCC released their sixth report addressing that people in ecosystems that contribute the least to the climate crisis are and will continue to be the most impacted. We've seen the devastation of worsening superstorms like Hurricane Sandy and Ida have brought to the state and here in New York City, and we can't afford to wait anymore. It is crucial that the council incorporates the voices of community leaders such as the Climate Justice Working Group, who know the needs of the communities best. Narratives to push all solutions such as renewable natural gas, waste generation, and green hydrogen all ignore these voices and improve the success of renewable zero emission technologies. The linkage to toxic and hazardous air pollutants only furthers the damages that are forced upon marginalized communities. The draft SCOPA plan does not adequately address our need to expand and improve electrified public and intercity rail transportation. Within the five boroughs of New York City, the MTA operates 28 depots with nearly 75% of them sited in communities of color. It's really no surprise that higher steps to COVID-19 are in the same communities where people struggle with respiratory illnesses that handle discriminatory siding decisions similar to my neighborhood in the Bronx. In addition, the current plan fails to outline strong and detailed public health guidelines and labor standards, including desired health improvements and funding for workforce development. In conclusion, we commend the state on passing the CLCPA and helping me dedicate funding streams and actual true solutions to zero emission power sector by 2040. It's time to put the health of our communities and New York City ahead of polluter profits in our outdated and seriously dangerous dependency on fossil fuels. Thank you.
Would we, before you go, Joseph, would we tee up room number five? Should we all lining up over there? I think we had three up already. We didn't? I'm sorry. Shouldn't we have three? And could we get six? Joseph?
Amelia Frederick, of the Utility Workers Union of America.
Good afternoon. Good morning. I'm following the basic steps of my national president, James Sullivan, and as my president and former president, I want to ask you to chill out. Now, Bailey, we all talked about a just transition. But let's be fair. Just to who?
And when?
And when? At this point in time, the one debate that's not really mentioned exclusively is nuclear. The Sierra Club is back in nuclear, and there is a reason why. After the biggest disaster that we had in 1979, Three Mile Island, United States backed off nuclear. We've made huge changes in how we perform this. It took 14 years to clean up Three Mile Island, followed by Ben. Chernobyl. Now followed by Japan. These are disasters that have all been prevented. We are looking for a just transition and looking for electrification by 2040. We will have to build that infrastructure, accommodate millions of gigawatts that will be needed. We just lost a 200-megawatt power plant that had zero emissions. How do we replace it? It's not going to be secret source. It's not going to be exclusively wind. So a third alternative source that can be done is nuclear. So I make you consider putting that back in your agenda so that we can have a just price for our local community, because the power kilowatt hour will skyrocket. And then how come my Bronx community, our Bronx, how they're going to be able to afford? Make sure that you consider putting that in your plan. Thank you.
Anyone who hasn't seen the action tour or six, winding up this, three and a quarter minutes. John Doyle, member.
Thank you, council members, and thanks to everyone here today. My name's John Doyle, a lifelong Bronx resident and a 30-year resident on City Island. This is a word of rising, which has been a testimony in this body in the past. Our neighborhood is small, road I have a half mile wide in my island. It's between the Bronx and Westchester County. Our community, 4,500 residents, are physically divided by the rest of the Bronx, although they are the largest park in the city of New York. Utility lines run through the park, it runs through the island itself. We pour, I'm just going to summarize my testimony, so I don't get too many. We pour maintenance of our utility lines, we pour maintenance of our sewer lines. There's constant flooding, even for a minor storm, and we are transit deserts, more than 75% to 85% of East Bronx sites ride their cars or automobiles. I drove my car here today, which might upset some people on that side. If we're going to ask people to give up their cars, which I know is a part of this presentation, you've got to have steady bus service, it's got to be 24/7. Our bus service is only going online 24/7, more recent than that, actually this June. And you've got to expand the NYC ferry service. You can't expect people who are in transit deserts to just magically give up their cars and sacrifice hours of their lives waiting on buses unless they're more frequent. I'd also like to just conclude that we need to put our utility lines underground. I know it's a problem in Riverdale, it's definitely a problem on City Island, and we need to make sure that we're investing in our water quality. Not only are the sea levels rising around City Island, around Country Pub, which is not included as a disadvantaged community, you need to consider that, Bronx Neck and elsewhere, we have a situation here, a real tangible situation here, where the water has been rated as an F by Save the Sound. We need you as leaders, as people who can dedicate funding to go up the map, to fix the sewer pipes, to clearly pour sewage into the hutch river that's coming downward. And we need to deal with the combined sewer outages that are all throughout the, or outlets, rather, that are all throughout the east side of the Bronx, poisoning our waterways and making it unsafe for times to come. This panel has been tasked with thinking big picture solutions because this borough has been disadvantaged for generations, so I encourage you to think big and to please act on this stuff. Thank you so very much.
Joseph Sullivan, owner's level one.
I just want to say to the gentleman earlier, he said that we are laborers. We are not. We are skilled tradesmen. We go to school for five years. We go to school for five years. We're going to do this. Gas might be installed correctly by all my technicians, the less deputies. It has to be maintained when it gets to a certain age. We understand that. Now, the fact that you want to, the limited gas, which is such a, which has so much of under our ground in the United States, we can, we can, we can harness it and send it where we need it to, and make it true as a box, but that's another story. Now, in regards to converting to electric, I think you're going to be taxing it too much. Now, we're going to be having more carbon emissions because now the power plants have, let me see, they want uranium, coal, and gas. So now, you say you want to include the electrical grid by making everything electric. Where's the electricity coming from? It's coming from the power plant. Now, if we watch electric vehicles, what happens to those batteries when they age? What dump do they go into? They don't decompose. They will sit in the dump and rot. Now, in regards to backup generators, because you're in a hospital and the power goes out. That generator is typically powered by gas and wood.
What happens if you're in a hospital? The gentleman said his wife was in the hospital. You see my point?
You see my point? Now, what kind of backup generator do you have for electric?
What are you going to do?
What are you going to do?
You need to have gas.
If you eliminate gas, you're going to eliminate thousands of jobs. We need that. It burns clean and safe and it's clean directly.
Possible pollution is changing the climate and killing people. I salute you for taking action.
My group, New York, has taken a very close look at the integration analysis. They assert our commission for your work. There are some serious shortcomings. First, Naserta is using unjustifiably high capacity factors for solar and wind energy technology. What should be 14% of solar energy, Naserta assumes 22%. What should be 26% of offshore wind, Naserta assumes 32.5%. Second, Naserta naively relies on dirty electricity to take care of the last and most difficult to serve 5% of our electricity needs. Once our neighbors expand wind and solar generation as well, this power will not be available when we need it. Why does Naserta sell us this useless scheme? With renewable energy transition, there's one hard rule. First percentages are the easiest, the last ones are the hardest. This import scheme just shaves off the hardest 5% of the model, but not from reality. Both tricks result in gross underestimate of money and land needed to get us a reliable energy system with wind and solar alone. Could nuclear energy save the day? Nuclear is clean, reliable, and gentle for nature and land. Scientists and energy consultants all over the world, even the integration analysis actual author, E3, but for a different client, have shown that cost-optimized decarbonization scenarios heavily rely on nuclear energy. The integration analysis itself proves that nuclear is valuable. Simply by assuming 80-year instead of 60-year operation of our existing upstate plants, the analysis is improving by $8.7 billion in net present value. From there, we can show that a single gigawatt of nuclear capacity saves $420 million in direct costs every year. Why then does the integration analysis exclude nuclear capacity from the allowed options? We call this shortcoming number three. All of these shortcomings must be fixed, or New York will get in right.
Travis Javits, Director of Regulatory Delivery at National Grid.
Good afternoon. I am Donald Shabospor, making the statement on the Health of National Grid. I'm here to tell you there is a better way. I am one of the authors of Pathways to Partner Mutual in NYC. I studied how this commission provided New York's premier office, Tynan, at the National Grid, published last spring. National Grid operates electric and gas utilities throughout the New York State. We provide energy to over 4.2 million customers. All told, our business in the state is approximately 70% electric, 30% gas users. Winning the fight against climate change requires that we achieve emission reductions across multiple sectors, all while ensuring safety, security, reliability, equity, and affordability. Electrification will play a crucial role. However, we also need to offer attractive and diverse range of clean heating solutions so customers can choose what best addresses their needs on performance and cost without endangering the climate goals we all believe in. A coordinated gas production decarbonization strategy, utilizing a diversity of technologies and strategies, is a better way to manage cost and feasibility risk of decarbonization than relying almost exclusively on single technologies or strategies. A hybrid pathway where we decarbonize both electricity and gas networks was not considered by the Climate Action Council. Much like the way we decarbonize the electricity network through the adoption of renewables like solar and wind, we can also decarbonize the gas system through adoption of clean fuel, like renewable natural gas, sustainable biogenic sources, and clean hydrogen. It is important to recognize that 15 years ago, when wind and solar were in their infancy, costs for such technologies were high and penetration was extremely low. Wind and solar generation technology is now cost competitive to traditional generation sources and is becoming commercially scaled. We expect the same type of advances in renewable natural gas and hydrogen in the next few years. New York should drive decarbonization of gas by establishing renewable gas procurement standards, so closing Triverge, the CAC, to modestly consider a hybrid path.
Chris Nicol, New York.
Good afternoon. My thanks to the committee and all the agency staff of the Coral on the draft SCOPA plan today. I am Dr. Chris Nicol, beginning farmer, longtime community organizer, and a former legislative staffer heading the cross-the-river community. I want to speak about something you may not care as much about until you're on Long Island or upstate, agriculture. I have three points to deliver, developed in conjunction with advocates statewide, including the Nova New York Soil Health Association. First, the SCOPA should prioritize land access and management by advocating for state funds to purchase development rights on armed forest land, as well as massive technical assistance to land managers. Set aside funding for Black, Indigenous, and people of color, women, LGBTQ+, low-income, veteran, beginning farmers, and undocumented farm workers, access land and farming resources. Climate, racial, and economic... Climate, racial, and economic justice are interconnected with land access. Also prioritize gateways, stations, and reservation areas, which provide the maximum climate benefit for over-strategies designed for the industry. Second, the Scoping Plan must take a hard position against concentrated animal feeding operations. No public investment should be made in trying to make these unsustainable practices less damaging to the climate by installing coverages as layers. Industry can do that if they want to. Government should put a lipstick on this page where this dairy cow is being sold. As the climate justice working group suggests, the Scoping Plan should instead ensure that funds are directed toward reducing overinterrant and renewable sources of agricultural methane emissions, and that these funds will define resilience rather than trench irredeemable downstream maneuver management practices. Remember, pastured dairy maladies reduces 2% to 3% of the methane of confined cows. Same of the techno fix. Last, using some explicit proposals, Ag and Markel have elaborated the Future Change Commission, glad to see you today. In developing and administering the Haven's Ecosystem Services Program, it compensates farmers for the many interrelated and essential ecosystem services their farms can provide, including soil health and concentration frustration. This program should explicitly favor small diversified and intensively managed farms that provide the most climate and community benefits. Thank you so much.
Linda Cops.
I live in the Bronx. I came here with private gasoline cars. I live in a house fueled by oil and gasoline. But I know perfectly well that new speeches need to change. My tuition choices, my home, my four-year-old granddaughter is going to have a better future. Thank you for holding to this tight schedule to adopt the Scoping Plan. I urge you to fund the CCA, which are dedicated funding mechanisms, probably the tuition fee applies to the state. I want to be, to be able to carry out this fairly unprecedented interim reports on the first motion. I urge you not to adopt all solutions to the climate crisis, with my roles in renewable, natural gas, and green hydrogen. The focus should be on renewable zero pollution, to reduce emissions, like solar. Thank you so much.
Spreading to so many, thank you everybody for being here and the panel for having this conference. I'm a farmer, a father, an immigrant, and a climate consensus. Building two decades of energy investment in a climate advocacy, advancing a master in sustainability at our extension. I spend most of my spare time working to preserve and eliminate climate change. Given the risks posed by climate change, New York's plan must have minimal probability of failure. Moving to the latest scientific and technical understanding of energy systems, the Scoping Plan represents a higher risk path. Most unjust transition is a failed energy transition. And the bundle of reliable, resilient electricity is the backbone of a prosperous society. Especially, we are electrifying more parts, beneficial electrification lines, we rely more on the grid. Solar wind and batteries have a key role playing in New York. But the Scoping Plan states 100% carbon free electric system, quote, "cannot currently be met by the deployment of existing renewable energy and energy storage technologies." Community run and maintain reliability. The plan requires this high level of emissions-free resources to ensure system reliability. However, no such technology identified in the Scoping Plan as a necessary technological durability, affordability, regeneration, scale ability today. Bearing such breakthroughs is irresponsible, as it has high chance of failure. Nuclear energy is the largest source of carbon footprint energy in America and Europe, which is available and deployed today. Beyond the electricity sector, 2 million nuclear technologies capable of creating high temperature heat for industrial processes, low carbon wind dispenses, fuels our decarbonization confrontation, negative emission technologies, and more. Just transition looking wants equitable access to high-quality family-sustaining jobs. Communities are built around stable employment and tax earnings from hosting nuclear partners. All energy industries can nuclear have the highest level of humanization, providing multi-generational wealth-paying jobs that enable vibrant, healthy communities. Nuclear is the perfect energy source for communities that aspire new industries and new revenue and employment. Unlike other decarbonizing technologies, nuclear is mainly in America, mainly New York's bike chains. There are no parking lot, that's all I will tell you. New York, it's time for, time to pioneer, New York has a promise of nuclear technology, and it's time to go back to thinking bigger. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for listening. Paige O'Barry, Director of Outreach and Community Relations at the Association for Energy Affordability.
Hello. Hello. My name is Paige O'Barry, and I'm the Director of Outreach and Community Relations at the Association of Energy Affordability, headquartered here in the Bronx for the last 30 years. Our mission has been achieving energy efficiency in new and existing buildings to foster and maintain affordable and healthy housing, especially in low-income communities. Increasingly, we know that we must electrify our buildings in order to reduce greenhouse gas emissions that are causing the climate crisis, as well reduce air pollution that is damaging our public health. I appreciate the opportunity to share our support for the New York successfully implementing our nationally leading climate law and key building sector recommendations of the draft Scoping Plan. We support the goal of decarbonizing 2 million buildings by 2030 through weatherization, energy efficiency, and electrification. In order to achieve this goal equitably, we must commit at least $1 billion annually to support energy efficiency and electrification for disadvantaged communities and low-income We urge that the state's Climate Action Plan require that we immediately begin to identify workforce development needs and develop the plans to scale up workforce for building decarbonization. Thank you for your time and consideration. We look forward to working together to achieve New York's climate goal, bring jobs, healthier homes, and communities. Thank you.
I want to go back to Marina, but I do want to say that if you wish to make a statement tonight and have not registered, there are registration cards out front, and we'd be happy to hear from you. Marina?
President, Chairman, Director of New York, hopefully you can align with me.
Chairman, here is the second members of the Climate Action Council. Thank you for allowing me to testify by saying they ran the Climate Action Plan. My name is Fred Zolten, Director of New York Auction Wind Alliance. Collaboration, developing developers of auction wind farms, national environmental organizations, organized labor, and academia. And we're all joined together to support our drivers on responsible auction wind yard in New York. New York's auction wind is a shining success story. Programs are already well by its way, we have its nation leading goal, 9 gigawatts by 2035, and it's certainly possible that New York will cure its higher, its 2035, in the next month, next phase initiation. These investments are paying significant dividends. Parks from Long Island to the Capital District are buzzing with activity, as they retool and modernize to meet the first needs of the auction windows. Factories like Yelson facilities in Paulsville, State of New York, retooling fabricated steel components necessary to handle the winter events of the sea bed. Industry, organized labor, colleges, and all standing at the training facilities to ensure well-trained force of workforce is ready for the first turbulence of the war as early as 2023. And at the center of it all, reducing the miles of fossil fuel generation impacts public health, cuts our national security, and exposes this to future generations to prevent climate change. This is no time for New York to rest on the laurels. We have a lot of difficult work ahead as we transition to a decarbonized grid. I'll provide my written testimony, but I'd like to just briefly summarize our recommendations. First, New York should update and extend its goals for offshore wind. Under all scenarios, and their Climate Action Plan lies on offshore wind for at least 20% of the winter energy demand, and so New York should provide a glide path to meet those targets. Secondly, Governor Hochul has already announced offshore wind master plan 2.0. Truly, the deep ocean environment is the next frontier of ocean, of offshore wind generation, and we applaud the effort to undertake this.
I want to, I'd like to thank you very much for your comments, and if you could submit the rest of it in writing to the website, that would be great, and I'd be happy to post it behind you.
Thank you for your time and attention. Wa, May Wa of the United Constitution.
Hi, my name is April, I'm a senior activities association group. Now, thank you for the opportunity for us to speak and give our comments. The UCG, we're highly proud of our associates from various major electric, gas utilities. We're formed in December 2020, to provide expertise to the Climate Council, and be a resource to our advisory panels, as to develop regulations. UCG members operate a very complex system. We deliver energy to our customers, to their homes and businesses. UCG is committed to, we're out in experience, achieving the reduction goal. Given the capacity of the energy systems and the historic transformation of the state's goal, it's imperative that the state focus on continued provision for state, reliable energy for our customers. To achieve the deep conversation of energy service, we require optimization of the state energy delivery systems, and also a multitude of system and future energy resources. No energy options to be included at this stage of the information process. Now, as the electrified portions of our energy systems currently rely on other sources of energy, it's clear that additional infrastructure will be needed to meet the demands of the larger electric network. While we look to the entirety of the energy system to ensure the most positive approach, as this process unfolds, the gas distribution system must continue to serve our customers safely and reliably. In the future, that system can be used for the energy decarbonization by flowing low and low carbon energy, such as renewable natural gas and hydrogen. The UCG supports robust research and development of these necessary technologies, electric storage capture and reserve systems. We, UCG, with a very improved, well-tracked record of emission reductions and energy delivery, we remain committed to helping the state in achieving the CO2 goals.
My name is R. B. I. Blackmore, I'm a junior lawyer, one. I understand the urgency that's going on in the time control, but if we take away one resource from the other, and we just rely on just one, that's where you have to be a disaster. However, again, it's, acknowledgement is getting much better. We can keep both, gas and electricity together, without wanting the other for that day-to-day. The court has passed on to who? Me as a customer. Thank you very much.
Flanders Jones, New York State Air Safety Association.
My name is Flanders Jones, a worker for the now, but from the system, and also a cabinet member. In your state, there's a participation, there's a potential of over 3,000,000 offices in your state, including 5,000,000, and 6,000 in New York City. 500,000 are working the Bronx. As an officer of the North Carolina Department, we have seen a current pandemic in the Bronx. Over 40,000 families have died, and hundreds of houses have been dead, wounded, physically and emotionally. We have seen a deep impact of pandemic activity that has had a low income of 400. Disparities are all at a passing, affecting my sexuality, many businesses, having energy and economy, and we know that this is just a preview of what's ahead, we cannot take climate change seriously. It is critical that we be the ones. In fact, we are already seeing the destruction that climate change and environmental degradation have done in the Gulf of Arabia. In this, in this way have contributed to an increase in population. The returns have been discharged into a city here, causing a steady increase in chronic asset competition in our most vulnerable communities. In addition, this community is also faced environmental injustices like uncomplimented wildlife and insecticide. They are also the ones eventually...
Can everybody hear me now? Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, CAC Council members. My name is Carl Johnson, and I'm privileged to have been born and raised in the Bronx. I've lived here the majority of my life, and currently work in the Bronx as the business agent who covers this great borough for... as the business agent who covers this great borough for Plumbers Local Union Number One, the Plumbers of New York City. I have many friends, family members, as well as hundreds of members, some of which are present in this room, who would be hurt by this legislation. There's been no comprehensive cost analysis of what it would cost individuals and businesses to meet these changes. This plan would require massive electrification of the grid without guaranteeing, without guaranteeing that there's enough power sources to keep the lights on. Homeowners and businesses would be facing less reliable power and would be required to pay more for it. The average home conversion to full electric costs roughly $25,000 to $50,000. How are most New Yorkers who are low to middle income going to pay electric, are going to pay electric bills that are as much as three or four times higher than they're currently paying? While wind, solar, and geothermal are great emerging technologies, they're not entirely unpredictable, they're extremely unpredictable, and can't supply the power demand that New Yorkers requires. It's not uncommon in most New York City neighborhoods, on a very hot or a very cold day, to have rolling power outages, brownouts, and blackouts because the electrical grid can't handle the additional demands placed upon it. And that's today. We all understand that in a perfect world, you would just flip a switch and this conversion would happen. Unfortunately is, the reality is that the technology necessary is still years away. We believe that natural gas is the bridge to get us to where we need to be. The phasing out of natural gas can't and shouldn't happen until we have a reliable source of energy to replace it. We are the skilled tradesmen and women who will rebuild this system. We care deeply about climate change, deeply about clean energy. If we do this right, we can replace the lost fossil fuel jobs with clean energy jobs. However, we want sensible, reality-based solutions that won't hurt New Yorkers. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Joseph? Louder? Are you out of?
Test? George Malandrakis, Plumbers Local Union Number One.
Joseph, hang on for a second, please. If you all would like to talk, please do, but please do it outside the hearing room. We want to make sure that we hear each person. Joseph, again?
George Malandrakis, Plumbers Local Union Number One.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is George Malandrakis. I am a business agent, Plumbers Local One, plumbers and gas feeders of New York City. Proud 38-year member. I just want to piggyback a little bit on what my brother Carl Johnson said, you know, and not a lot, a lot of great ideas, a lot of solutions, but no one's really spoken, you know, to the fact of what is the cost to the consumer of this? And Carl just mentioned $25,000 to $30,000, an increase to the consumer, to a homeowner. I am a homeowner. I have two young adult boys that I love to death, both in college. $5 gas prices, prices of food going up every day. How am I to afford, or anybody else in this room, a $25,000 to $50,000 increase for us to transition into electric? How does a retiree afford something like that? A retiree that has paid off their mortgage and all of a sudden is burdened with a $25,000 to $50,000 bill because they need to transition into electric? Great ideas. We agree that, yes, the environment has to get cleaner and get better, but I really believe that we need just to step back a little bit and, and just a more comprehensive study on this, slow down, not, not be so quick to jump on this. I understand, great ideas, and, and, you know, we're on board, but again, how, how do we afford this? $25,000 to $50,000 per homeowner, retirees? How are they gonna, how are they gonna pay for this? Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Julie Lapano, New Yorker Youth.
Hi, my name is Julie Lapano, and I'm a resident of Bayside, Queens. I'm here today because the IPCC released their sixth assessment report on climate change, and it has the included message. Global warming reaching 1.5 degrees centigrade in the near term would cause unavoidable increases in multiple climate hazards and present multiple risks to ecosystems and humans. The level of risk will depend on concurrent near-term trends in vulnerability, exposure, level of socio-economic development, and adaptation. When I look around my neighborhood, I do not see any signs of this needed adaptation. It's business as usual, with underfunded transit and infrastructure built for the combustion of fossil fuels and an attitude that changing any of this is too hard, too expensive, or can be fixed by the fossil fuel industry. The CLCPA needs to expand and electrify public transportation with a priority on disadvantaged communities. It needs to create and invest in an express bus system for all metro areas. It needs to put major investments into clean, public, intercity rail transportation, and it needs to install an electric charging network that would allow me and my neighbors the choice of buying electric cars. We can't do any of this without a single stream source of funding for this CLCPA. These retrofits are expensive, and as we've heard tonight, these are groundbreaking changes. Without this funding, we will not be able to make this adaptation without leaving anyone behind. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph?
Everett Judge, Plumber Local Union.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to, to voice my opinion. I hear a lot of things talking about targeted sectors, and when I hear that, I hear gas. We have to use that for a targeted sector. Why is that so important? I didn't hear electricity targeted sector. I heard gas targeted sector because it is reliable. It is reliable. We can shoot that gas and know that it's going to go there and it's going to be there for us. This winter, when we was all cold, I don't see anybody using solar panels to heat up their homes. Renewable, clean, natural gas, renewable and clean. For the last 10 years, I had the blessing of working with our illustrious Fire Department of New York City. We have one dedicated line. Listen to what I'm saying. One dedicated line for the emergency generator. You know what that line contains? What does that line contain? So, when your house is on fire and you're burning, are we looking for the sun to shine? Are we looking for the sun to shine? Are we looking for that renewable gas to come out of the ground every day and give us that power to go and fight on? Now, I'm not smart, but I'm not crazy. I want something that's reliable and not something that is maybe. That's all I'm saying. We are all for a clean environment. But let's be reasonable. Let's be reasonable. What is clean and renewable and reliable, people? And reliable. Our Fire Department, our illustrious Fire Department, has a two-and-a-half-inch line dedicated to the generator to create electricity. Thank you very much.
Arif Ole, South Bronx Unite.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm here on behalf of South Bronx Unite, an organization that advocates for equity, social justice, and environmental justice in the South Bronx. It's befitting that the first hearing is here. The South Bronx has the dubious distinction of being New York City's epicenter for environmental injustice, where generations of people of color have grown up overburdened with environmental pollution, including a disproportionate number of waste transfer stations, peak power plants, expressways, heavy manufacturing, and diesel truck-intensive shipping operations. In short, there is poison in the air we breathe. This has resulted in childhood asthma hospitalization rates eight times higher than the national average and has contributed to a host of health conditions, ranging from infant mortality and cognitive impairment to chronic bronchitis, cardiovascular disease, and diabetes. As you consider clean air and a healthy environment, I urge you to pursue the scenario that has the least amount of emissions and that expedites the electrification of both transportation and buildings. As related to buildings, there are many residential buildings in the South Bronx that are health hazard and that exacerbate existing health conditions, including respiratory illnesses. The CLCPA provides us with an important opportunity to both improve housing quality as well as energy efficiency by fully upgrading homes, not just retrofitting them, so that people can literally breathe easier. And this upgrading and retrofitting, as well as other jobs required in the transition, should be done by local residents and those whose jobs are currently rooted in the fossil fuel economy, including the jobs held by our union friends here. Ample training opportunities should be provided so people have the skills needed for the new green economy and no one has to be left behind in the transition. The goals of the Climate Act are good, but they mean nothing if we don't have adequate funding for their implementation. And so, it is essential that the state establish a committee, a committed funding source for the transition, including a polluter fee. Lastly, as someone who migrated from Bangladesh, a country that's on the front lines of climate change despite contributing a negligible amount to carbon emissions, I can tell you in no uncertain terms that displacement, disease, and migration as a result of the fossil fuel economy is very real and that carbon emissions and pollution do not recognize borders. What we do here, our policies here, affect not only New Yorkers but people everywhere, in other cities, in other states, in other countries. I urge you to pursue a course of action that values our health, our futures, and our lives, not fossil fuels. We cannot afford anything less than bold and courageous action now. Thank you.
Joseph?
Rafael Cruz, Plumbers Local Union Number One.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Rafael Cruz. Welcome, and thank you. I'm a Plumbers Local One member, but I'm going to talk to you as a concerned citizen. We talk about health, we talk about money, and that's fine. How many times have we heard on the news of a blackout and what happens afterwards? Mayhem. Not so far in Queens. I believe it was two, three weeks. There was no power there. People were going crazy. Okay, so that's one thing we got to think about. If there's a blackout and we go on, and we go on all-electric, you do the math. So, that's, that's one thing, right? Another thing is price. How many things, how many manholes are blown on the street because it's so old? So, if we're going to do something, we have to do everything. So, that $20,000 to $50,000 is a whole lot more than that. And that all comes out of us taxpayers, so we have to be concerned with that, too. And my heart goes out to everybody that has lost something or somebody because they've been sick. But I don't think it's the gas because the sea's been around for a long time. Not just when we got gas. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Karina?
Brandon Medina, Sunrise, New York City.
Hi, I'm Brandon Medina. I want to thank the council for holding this hearing. I'm a member of Sunrise NYC, as she said. Sunrise is committed to bold climate action that helps frontline communities and creates millions of high-paying new union jobs in the process. The oil industry laid off 100,000 employees in 2019 despite expanding, increasing fossil fuel infrastructure and raking in record-breaking profits, and they continue to do so. I heard something before about the coal miners. It's not just, coal miners are being laid off, but that includes in full-capacity functioning coal mines because they are being replaced by their executives with robots. Make no mistake, the fossil fuel industry does not care about anyone here, not just in terms of killing us with climate change, but they will fire everyone in this room the second they get a chance, when they can replace you with a new machine or a robot. They prove it every single day. Now, I'm very happy with, the CLCPA does do a lot to adjust, to address an equitable transition, to help a lot of these people to transition. Some, not all their jobs are going to be lost. A lot of them won't be. Some of them, there will be a transition, but there will also be a transition if they get replaced by the fossil fuel industry with a robot that instills pipelines. It's happening already. I want to urge the CLCPA to go forward with the transition, put these people on the front lines of training, readjustments, and also to reject false solutions, biofuels, natural gas, and burning of... Thank, thank you.
Thank you. Again, we're going to hear everybody tonight. Joseph?
Gerard Tolbert, Plumbers Local Union Number One.
You know, I hear about all of... I hear about all of these jobs. Where does the working man fit in? The guy in the boots? The guy that's out there every day making sure that these things happen? Now, I just want to ask a few questions. Because this is, I'm sure this is not just for big business because we the ones who get hurt all the time. So, the first question, the first question I want to ask is, how will the grid be supported for the output of electricity? The second question I want to ask is, how will the electricity be produced? Lastly, I want to say, how will they regulate this? How will they regulate the electricity? Because as we know, Texas is a mess. We saw what happened in Texas, that people's electricity bill that was $33,000 one month, $2,000 and change the next month, $15,000 and change the following month. The only thing that I want to say about the plumbers that's been here since the 1800s, our motto is, "The plumber protects the health, the health of the nation."
Thank you for that. Karina?
Dani Connolly, Plumber.
Hey, I'm a plumber at a local number one. I'm well into the gas certifications. I got to certify every year to make sure everything's right. So, we're not talking about the real product here. The big problem is the greenhouse gases are from electricity and heat, which is from the coal industry, is 31%. Agriculture is 11%, transportation is 15%, forestry is 6%, and manufacturing is 12%, and gas is 3%! Are we out of our minds?
Thank you. Thank you. Joseph, who's next?
Serena Nagy.
My name, thank you. My name is Serena Nagy. I'm a Bronx resident of the Soundview area and a Sierra Club volunteer. Sierra Club is the nation's largest and oldest environmental organization with 50,000 members and supporters across New York State, and I'm speaking tonight for the Sierra Club. I guess you can all see that I'm like really pregnant right now, and I'm expecting my second baby next month and welcome my firstborn at the beginning of this pandemic. He's going to be two at the end of April. And I'm mentioning this because as a mother, they are my main priority, and I want you all to understand that in order to be here, I have to find childcare, drag myself on a bus, then two trains, then walk over, and it's not very comfortable. That is to say, I chose to be here because I know how incredibly important getting this scoping plan... scoping plan right is to my children's future. I live in an area where asthma rates are higher than in many areas of the city, let alone the state, and I don't want my kids to grow up unhealthy. I don't want them to struggle to breathe when they run and play, let alone when they sit and lay down. I want them to enjoy the environment, to recognize different species of birds and plants. I want them to be able to enjoy a mildly hot summer and snow days during the winter, and I want to be able to take them to museums around the city on rainy days without worrying that the subway system is going to flood and will get stranded somewhere, something that actually already scares me because my husband got stuck on the subway system during those crazy storms last summer. To sum it up, I support strong climate action, the CLCPA, and Scenario Three of the draft plan accelerated electrification and limited combustion of alternative fuels. Living at the intersection of two highways and across the river from Huntsville Food Market, I know that investment in electric vehicles and electric vehicle infrastructure will not only slow down climate change, but will be extremely important to the future health of my children. And I also strongly believe that the state should prioritize equity by increasing the affordability of vehicles to low-income New Yorkers. Just as important, if not more so, I believe the state needs to do everything in its power to move away from fossil fuels, creating a moratorium for new fossil fuel plants and creating a plan to retire and replace existing plants like those in the Bronx. We have to invest on proven renewable energy technologies and fund a just transition and support workers affected by these transitions. Got a lot to say, not a lot of time, but thank you so much for listening.
Joseph?
Edgar Ramos, Local Three Electrician.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. We need the proper opportunity to upgrade and improve our infrastructure in order to support some of the newer suggestions you guys are doing, such as when they replaced the oil in the buildings, natural gas, they replaced the line in front of my building. Two days later, they had to increase the size in order to support the natural gas in the buildings, which was a waste of money. Proper work, not Band-Aids, done by qualified and properly-trained tradesmen, not just labor. Our brothers and sisters have an enormous wealth of training and are prepared for any new technologies and renewable energy sources that come our way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who's registered to speak tonight, who has yet to speak? If you would like to, you can certainly go out to the registration desk, and you could fill out a card and come back in and do so. I think we have someone right now.
Mark Belly, Plumber.
I just want to remind everyone to please listen and save your talking for outside of the hearing room. Thank you.
Mark Belly, Plumber's Local Number One. Thank you for having me here tonight. I just wanted to say, the natural gas is the cleanest burning of any of the fossil fuels out there. I understand that there may be a need to do away with it, but in a couple of years, we'll have the technology to replace natural gas in the street with hydrogen and other sources. Right now, the infrastructure of the electrical system in New York City and throughout different cities throughout the state cannot handle the additional loads that are coming on. If you remember, a few years ago, New York City changed all of the buses from being gasoline to being natural gas because it's got a much lesser carbon footprint. Natural gas is an abundancy in the United States, and it helps the United States to keep away foreign oil countries that supply us with oils. It's got nowhere near the carbon footprint that coal, oil, or gasoline does. Thank you.
Thank you. So if we have no more speakers for tonight, we will remain... Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anybody else? No?
Andrew Wells from Bronx.
Hi, everybody. My name is Andrew Wells. I'm actually a New York City public school, high school science teacher. I've taught all over, everywhere from Harlem to Lower East Side, and actually live kind of far away, right on the border of Ocean Hill, Bushwick, and Brownsville, which, just like the South Bronx, is... If you look at the asthma rates across the city, that's where they're the worst. The problem of climate change is unimaginably big. I literally have learned so much as an environmental science teacher, just having to keep up with it, and it's so big that it can feel like even local contributions or adjustments don't affect the big picture, but that's really the only place where we can start. And here in New York City, right now, with the closure of Indian Point Nuclear Power Plant earlier last year, we get about 85% of our electricity from fossil fuels that has to be generated within the city. So that's what leads to those asthma rates. The upper half of the state gets about 88% of their energy from renewable sources. There's hydroelectric and, like every other type of clean energy that you've heard of. The other thing about climate change is it is horrible. There's going to be upwards of 200 million refugees around the world by 2050, and I'm barely 30. I might, who knows, I could still be teaching then. And the students that I've taught here in the city are already from around the world and from places that have been devastated by climate change. So it really just feels like there's not too much that we can do. Thank you.
So thank you. The hearing will... Have we missed anybody else? I don't want to. No? The hearing will remain open tonight until 7:00. It is called for seven, but I wanted to go over a couple of things before you perhaps take off. First, I want to thank the team at Bronx Community College. They've been terrific to us. We really appreciate the work that they've done. And second, this is the first of 10 public hearings on this very topic. There are seven more that are in person. There are two more that are virtual. The schedule is on the website, which is climate.ny.gov. You'll also find their instructions on how to submit comments in writing. You can also submit them by email at scopingplan@nicerta.ny.gov. You can also submit by U.S. mail, and that is to draft scoping plan comments at nicerta17columbuscircle@newyork12203-6399. Written comments must be postmarked by June 10, 2022, to be entered into the record. We're very glad that you came tonight, really appreciate you listening to each other. I know there's a lot of emotion around these topics. Very grateful. We will stay here until 7:00. We may have some folks who come in late after work, but we'll be here.